Dr. Watson, would you please raise your hand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. So next, I will hand it over to you Superintendent Laugry.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the annual meeting where we formally introduce our new instructional staff to the board. I believe you've got provided in your pack a list of those names, locations of folks, and we invite some of them to come to our board. All of them who are board meeting. And sometimes we get a lot, sometimes we get a little. Tonight's one of those nights where we got a little, that's okay. We have one, a familiar face put in a new position. Jennifer Christian, Jennifer, could you please rise? Jennifer is serving as our interim principal at Trail Elementary and doing an absolutely fantastic job. And Jen, you probably did this when we first hired you, we want to ask you to do it again.
I still have standards in my head.
Jennifer? Name, previous assignment, school that you attended your undergrad, and maybe a sentence or two about how things are going in Trail. Take it away.
I'm Jennifer Christian. I, the last three years, have been a district coach for many teachers and TSS support coach. Before that, I was a elementary teacher at Trail for most of my career. This is my 17th year with Hill Pea. 20th year teaching. Planned on staying here forever until I retire. My undergrad was U of M, and so was my masters was U of M as well.
You can say it.
Thanks. Thank you. I think my husband would kick me out if it wasn't. So there's that, and...
How are things going in Trail this year in your new role as principal?
So far, I think it's going really well. We're on, we're already a month and a half in or so. We have the ball rolling on lots of things and testing and data collection, and everyone else is starting off their first week. And we're like, oh, you guys are just starting? Where are these people over here? Well, I think it's going pretty well. Staff feedback has been really good, and the parents and students all seem to be pretty happy, so.
Yeah, I know. The Trail folks and our year-round students and staff at Longwater are always kind of, you know, it's a big deal, this first day walk-in back stuff. They're four weeks old. Kind of anticlimactic, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Great job. Thanks for being here, Jen. We appreciate you. Can I yield back the balance of my time to you, Madam President?
Thank you, Superintendent Laugry. We will head into public comment, but I don't think I have any comment cards up here for the CD. So we will go right into our presentation. So I'll turn it back to you.
Back to me? Alright, Julia.
That was quick.
Well, you know, Julia from Barton Mallow joining us to give us an update. This is third or fourth update in the last, how many, how many formal updates? It should be reported due for us. This is the fourth.
Usually about four.
Yeah, yeah. So some of our board was able to attend a brief walkthrough of the high school led by Julia and Jake from Barton Mallow to see the upgrades and the current status of the bond projects as they exist today. But she's going to give us a deeper, more comprehensive look at what we stand in this part of the project. So Julia, I hand it over to you.
I'm excited.
Oh, I'm excited.
It should be green.
Technology?
That would be why.
Hey, there you go.
Okay, let's get it started. Okay, so bond timeline, this one should be pretty familiar. So I played a very crucial role since the bond passed in November of 2022. A little change that I did to here is I updated kind of the different bid paths and focused on the ones that we haven't moved so far since the start of bond back in when we started construction in 2023. Currently, we're wrapping up the interior and auditorium renovations at Hill Pea High School, which I'll elaborate that in a little bit. If you take your focus to kind of the last line there, you'll see where it says future bond projects. So we're actually entering into the final phase of the bond projects. So with construction expected to wrap up by fall of 2026. So currently, the design team, along with Barton Mallow and Hill Pea Community Schools, are evaluating final bond projects and deciding which ones are going to move forward, kind of taking into account where we sit priority-wise, available funding, what's left in the bond, and then kind of needs of the district. Because in every bond project, what we slate at the beginning, sometimes priorities change when you get into things, and, you know, just kind of reevaluating the list that we have and figuring out what the priority is and what best to utilize those dollars with moving forward. So we anticipate kind of finalizing which projects are going to move forward within the next month. That way, we hit our window to be able to do construction next summer. Okay, as previously mentioned, Hill Pea High School went through a significant interior renovation. So interior of Hill Pea High School, not including anything to do auditorium-wise with the addition, roughly received $2.5 million worth of renovations. So here are some statistics of what we went through through the summer. The entire facility was equipped with new voice fire alarm system, and that accounted for 470-plus fire alarm devices throughout the entire building. Messing areas, you had locker rooms, offices, everything is equipped with new fire alarm. Additionally, we replaced 1,400 fire suppression heads that were at their end of life, which were original to the building, so they were out that 50-year mark and needed to be replaced. Each corridor was fitted with brand-new ceiling tiles and LED light fixtures, which just brings a complete bright, modern look to the building. It's amazing what ceiling tile and lights can change the look of an entire building. So between probably, what if the corridors, classrooms, locker rooms, we installed 12,500 ceiling tiles throughout the building and more than 450 light fixtures. So this slide displays kind of a little snapshot of projects kind of through various stages throughout the summer. So the initial for the cafeteria, the top picture shows the before. So if you remember when you would look at the cafeteria, you had all those ceiling tiles that would angle up towards existing light fixture and really create kind of a weird look. I've never seen it done before like that, but kind of create that look. And when you look at the cafeteria now, not only do we have the new ceiling tiles, but there's also like an eight-inch gap around to create a, it's called a ceiling cloud area. So it's completely suspended on its own. It's not tied into the other ceiling tile. And that eight-inch gap around it was actually supposed to be a little bit bigger, but that eight-inch gap was the maximum we could go without having to fire suppress above that ceiling. So we kind of minimize that gap. That way, we didn't have to put fire suppression up there. And then the tiles, when you actually look at them, the tiles are actually rotated. That way, it produces kind of a distinct design just for that area in the cafeteria. Next is the band and choir rooms. Those went through some major enhancements as well. The initial layout of the band and choir spaces was you walk in and you have an office. You have a little room for musical or storage, and then you have another storage room. So to accommodate the new dressing room area in the front, we actually ended up having to shore up those walls, which is what you see in that top picture there, to support the mezzanine flooring above it, and then demo the walls if we needed to demo, and then reinstall the new walls, and then we take the shore down. And then the bottom indicates the new flooring that is in both the band and choir offices and in the dressing room areas. Transitioning to the revised classrooms. So the top picture is the two new class, well, it's picture one of them, but there are two new classrooms that were made out of roughly 1,400 square feet of media center to create two classrooms, roughly about 650, 700 square feet. So it's smaller than a typical classroom, but good for, you know, a special ed or an id connect area, just kind of a little, you know, step aside area. And when you're actually in the media center, it looks like it was always there. It doesn't look like it carved out a huge area in the media center. It looks like it was always there and you don't even notice it. And then the bottom photo shows, we had 10 classrooms that had accordion walls. You could pull those back and have one big classroom area. We ended up taking those out, doing a drywall wall to help with sound and just kind of create those walls for a classroom. And we also needed ceiling lights painted to kind of brighten up those spaces. And then final set of photos, the high school received improvements in the mechanical system. So the top picture is the new chiller system that provides air conditioning to the majority of the high school. And then there were a few spaces that the chiller didn't serve, and they didn't have anything to provide them with air conditioning. So those spaces ended up getting rooftop units. There was two that were installed this summer to provide those staff and students with air conditioning. Moving on to bathrooms. The student bathrooms received some definitely impressive upgrades. So this slide kind of highlights kind of really good before and after of what we started with and what we have now. So each bathroom now features elegant ceramic tile on the walls, updated partitions, new bathroom accessories, new toilets, new sinks. And honestly, watching these renovations take place was probably one of my favorites to watch just because not only did it need to be done, but it's such an impressive design. Like, it's hard to believe where we started and where we ended. And you often don't think of bathrooms as being a showcase piece, but, I mean, these really are. I mean, when the staff and students got back, when they walked into those bathrooms, and you could hear their reaction of the tile on the wall and the partitions and just the modern updates to them. They were very impressed.
And they host basketball games, and I wonder if we're thinking of watching all the future student bathrooms first? Yeah.
Just show through.
It'll be unique, unique. Let's, I'm gonna go to the chat.
Yeah, you gotta walk through and then get your ticket and then...
That's right. Ooh, ticket booth.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to locker rooms. So the renovations in the locker rooms are proceeded, proceeding as scheduled. So before school got out last year, we noticed that there was some dimensional issues with the existing back wall of the bathroom area that impeded compliance with some ADA standards. So we ended up having to remove that wall completely. Just showed this picture of the extensive work that we had to do. We had to remove that wall completely, and with that, we also had to end up removing the terraced floors that were in the shower and the bathroom area. So due to all that added work, we were not able to finish this during the summer timeframe, which we knew before walking into summer that it just wasn't something we were going to be able to accomplish. We do have temporary walls that were put in place so the students are able to utilize the locker room. We just have a wall up so they can't access the toilet or bathroom areas, so this space in particular. Currently, the new underground is in place, new floor drains, obviously the concrete has been poured. And then kind of next steps is building the masonry walls to separate. Then it will have epoxy flooring in there similar to what we did at the elementary schools. Ceramic tile on the walls in the shower area, bathroom fixtures, partitions. And then turnover in October. So the locker rooms will feature formal separation. We'll have doors that separate to create the formal JV Garsky locker rooms. New bathrooms and sinks, and each side will have four individual shower stalls instead of the old style of the communal showers. So we feel that this area will be definitely a key component in future athletic, but also be a showcase for athletic events for both students and for coaches. Okay, moving outside. So there are a significant amount of improvements done to the parking lots on the north side of the building, including the new bus loop. So taking a look at the map there, you'll see in green is kind of the buses' loop in. So they enter by the warehouse, they drive down the side of the north block, and then across in front of what will be the new PAC, and then loop around to that bus loop. So students now enter through the cafeteria doors. You can see there where it says bus student entrance. We do have the bus lot as being event-only parking. So buses are the only ones that need, should be down there during the day. That way, they have full range. They don't have to worry about hitting people. So that would be event parking only, and that did bring in 125 additional parking spots. And then you will notice that the north lot is not parent drop-off anymore, and that is staff parking only. And by creating that separation between staff and parents and buses, we greatly enhance the safety for students or bus drivers, for parents, for kind of for everybody by just making that little bit of a separation. And then those photos there are from, I believe it was the second day of school. At the end of the second day of school, I went out there with Linda to get photos of all the buses lining up. And the first day was, the first morning was a little hectic, and buses were coming in at, you know, different times. Getting used to the rock stuff. We've gotten the hang in the bus loop for sure. Moving on to the north lot. So that was a complete replacement, same footprint, same parking spots. Basically, mill it down, take up sub days, bring in stone. Really, that parking lot wasn't bad. That was a quick turnaround on that lot. And then between the bus loop and the north lot, there was 5,000 tons of new asphalt installed between those two parking lots. So it took a total of five days between, it started in the bus loop, based that, moved to the north lot, and then filled that, and then topped everything. So as I mentioned before, north lot is staff only, and I just want to kind of take a second, thank everybody for their patience during the transition with the new roles, which is parking lots. And, you know, it was, it was a fucking road to start, trying to get everyone to, you know, remember. And some people probably didn't look at the emails, the school hasn't started yet. So we kind of, you know, worked through with the admin staff, kind of helping facilitate all the traffic, especially on the north side. Schickler Drive. It's beautiful. It is, it is now. Okay, so let's take a journey down memory lane or, you know, Schickler Drive. Recall the numerous dips and potholes that persisted regardless the efforts made by the maintenance department. I can tell you, construction progress was no different. We hit every pothole. Anything that could go wrong on that, we dealt with it. The images displayed on the screen merely illustrate a fraction of what we dealt with out of Schickler Drive. So approximately two-thirds of that drive contained unsupful soils, causing us to have to do an undercut. So I got the formal definition of an undercut, but basically, we had to remove that unsupful soil from the upgrade, bring in additional stone, build it back up. That way, we have a stable base to build that drive on.
Hence the condition that it was in.
Yes. No matter what we did, those potholes were always going to come back. So the average depth of the undercuts were a foot. Some of them were a little less, some of them were a little more. But the photo on the left that was near the drainage pipe, which would be about two-thirds of the way down. That right there, to give you a visual, that undercut, if I stood there, it was right above my shoulders, a little over five-foot undercut there. It was just, water was getting to it, that clay was holding the water, and it was just plowed up all throughout that area. So that was the biggest undercut I've seen at, you know, roughly five foot.
We put a plaque there.
Despite all the challenges we encountered though, highly anticipated bond project is now complete. It's illustrated in that drawing, kind of goes through the new traffic flow there. So you can see when cars, vehicles enter, it now is split up into parent drop-off and bus traffic, so they're not mingling into each other anymore. And then on the way out, we got split where you can turn left, you can turn right, just to kind of help the traffic flow of that building with it just being a one-way in, one-way out. So first day of school, kind of, you know, parents, bus drivers kind of effortlessly went through this new pattern. You can kind of see it a little bit on the aerial shot, but we do have it painted box car. So then they can just see it when they're driving, and it's absolutely split into their necessary lanes. And it went as smooth as it could for the first day of school and everybody parking everywhere.
It was the best first day at Schickler from a parking perspective and entering and exiting the lot in my 15 years. Without question. And the parents said it's incredible.
That's good. So if you haven't driven down the newly upgraded Schickler Drive, I highly recommend you do it to witness the significant achievement that this bond program was able to bring specifically to that school, but really everywhere.
I did, I did before school started. I have to say, it was nice. I don't know, I wanted to go see it though.
Now, we were down to the wire, but, I mean, we appreciate the building for being flexible as we were trying. We got a rain, a rain day, rain when staff was supposed to, so opening day, we had to go in there and we had to top it. And so they could only stay on one side to get in and the other side to get out, and then they had open tops that night. So they appreciate the patience and the work around to make sure that we could get that done for the first day of school. So today, it was a busy summer. It's definitely an understatement, but the results that we accomplished in three short months will leave a lasting impression in the district for years. Not just this project, but everything at the high school, and even everything we're going to be doing at the PAC once we finish those. Speaking of the PAC, so we've had a lot come together in this entrance within the last couple of months. So if you drive by it now and you see a building, like you can see it starts to come together. So we do have the 1923 Hill Pea sign and the new masonry wall, as you can kind of see in that first picture. Structural seal is complete. The floors are poured, the concrete floors are poured there. We started roofing already. We're currently preparing to set the rooftop next week, got some software framing underway, and kind of finish the rest of the roof there. So this is just some quick timeline with some key dates or some key items that we need to be completed to achieve our deadline of December turnover for that space. And then same thing inside the auditorium. So personally, like, the auditorium for me, it feels like we did a lot of work and kind of stopped a little bit, and now we're back in there just with all the stuff inside of the high school. But that space is going to be a huge transformation too. So we have the new ramp, first photo there is the new ramp. We will have some wood that goes on that, so it'll look like it just is an extension of the stage. In the back in the second photo, you can see the tiered seating in the back that we poured, so that will all be chairs there. New lighting going in place. The fourth photo kind of shows the drywall in the back at the top to kind of cover all that brick there for conduits to go up and all of that. And then the third photo is a set of two double doors, so that would be in the existing lobby heading towards the school. So should have doors on those fairly soon, and so those will be to separate the PAC from the rest of the building. So when you're in the PAC, you won't be able to access the rest of the building when there's an event there. But on the other side, you will be able to pan again and get to the PAC so that the kids can still be able to get to band and choir. We'll probably have those doors mag will open during the day, but then we can shut them down at the third period, fourth period, whenever we're done in that wing and kind of deter the kids even from going to that space during the day. And then same thing at the last slide, kind of quick little timeline of the key things we need to get done. That way, we have that turnover in December. Questions? Comments?
The late 2023, was that a cornerstone or was that a...
That was limestone, yes.
Where was that?
It was mounted at Hill Pea High School above the main entrance to the second story.
It was on 21 on the south side of those outside of the main entrance.
So where's it been sitting all these years?
In the, in the chest.
It's been in Martin's garage.
Back from his truck.
When they downed, we worked with a fail to make sure that the demo crew could save it.
I love that. I love that.
And they actually put it on out and saved this two pieces so that we could utilize it.
I think that's fantastic, but a wonderful homage to the heritage of Hill Pea.
Well, if you go back in time, if you recall, inside the entrance to the football stadium, there are two pillars.
Right, the pillars.
Those pillars were taken down, but that's the old pillar entrance to the white Hill Pea High School football stadium. We saved those, recreated them, and this is the result of Hill Pea High School signs. So two really key pieces that I scored built into our physical plan.
That's wonderful.
I didn't fit it until, like, I was really nervous of getting that in the wall, but it actually fitted great. And it just, it's going to be a showpiece when it's all done. I mean, that's what I look at when I go out there. I just mentioned to you a contact, they were like, the one had a little bit of sand in it, and I'm like, that's got to get off it. Like, somebody clean that off so that it's not in that one. That's what I look at when I go out to the addition.
I mean, that's, the lighting is very impressive at the high school. It has definitely turned it into a feel of a brand new building.
Yes.
I mean, it was really nice. And honestly, great work to your team to do what you guys did this summer, this busy schedule.
Yeah.
But you still allowed us to start school on time, and, I mean, the kids can see all the great improvements. The classrooms there, the new addition is fantastic. Everything down to the new painted locker room. I mean, that really made a world of difference too.
Yeah. Yeah, that brought a new look to the building for sure.
And I think now we have a good, better flow of triad at the high school.
It's getting there.
It's getting there. We're trying new things every day. So I think it's definitely made a lot of progress.
Well, and honestly, I mean, credit for Julia and Jake in particular, the Barton Mallow team. This is above and beyond what the management staff would be participating in. They're literally out there in the lot in the morning, helping the direct traffic, make decisions. They're part of the team of people who are trying to determine, you know, we have really functionally changed the entire way you show up to the campus in the morning for parents, for buses. We've got significantly more parent drop-off than we've ever had before. The numbers, we estimate, are something a little over 600 vehicles in the morning out of the campus, 400 of which also plan to exit. We have a very small number of actual students that have purchased parking passes. So only 200 of our students actually have a parking permit, which means the majority of our kids, we had the average in years past, recent years. We had the average in years past, in recent years, forty-three buses dropping students out of the high school in the morning. We're now down to twenty-eight. That is more a function of not receiving decline, but family choice. So when you've got to get six hundred cars to a parking lot, essentially in a fifteen minute window, do so safely and efficiently, there's going to be some experiment with the traffic flow. I mentioned to the board that we're able to go to the walk for today, a significant benefit of having Jake and Julia present to see the actual flow of traffic, is that when we design and bring product ideas for the new renovation of the South Parking Lot to the board, they're going to have firsthand experience of how the traffic flows and not only are they recommending the actual physical work of the redesign, but actual advice and guidance on where to go, where to sit, how to handle things to make ingress and egress as efficient as possible. So really, kind of above and beyond the normal job description of what a construction management crew might participate in. So we're very thankful for that.
Is the car going a lot because of the ninth graders, you think? I mean, like them coming to the building now?
So it, you know, we just like, we have eleven hundred students in the building approximately. Don't forget that it's height, that building at five grade levels, right, eight through twelve, and you had, you know, fifteen hundred people there. So it isn't a function of, of students. Um, it's more a function of fewer students choosing to bus and fewer students choosing to purchase parking permits. So it's just more parent drop off traffic than you've ever had. So it's just the uniqueness, too, whether it's generational or just it's aberration and something that we're dealing with in the near term. Um, to give you a finger of reference, Lisa, when we, the last couple of years of the ten, eleven, twelve, um, we had in the four hundred, four hundred and fifty students with parking pass range, and now you're down to about two hundred. So yeah, it's just.
I mean, I think the students are choosing to postpone when they get their.
So we're just trying to kind of manage that, and also it, it is not a great design. And how De Mill Street dumps out onto Saginaw there, right at the exact point of the student entrance, is also a bottleneck. So you've got regular city traffic that's trying to turn left, coming northbound on Saginaw, on De Mill, or that want to, want to pass the high school down Saginaw into the northbound. On the first couple of days, we get a lot of additional traffic, and I think it's just a reminder of all schools in session. So if my normal commute to work is down Saginaw, maybe I turn on Turrell and head north on twenty-four now, or I avoid that kind of Clark Road into Saginaw throughway. Uh, that's part of it. Um, but also that entrance, that southernmost entrance, that kind of T-bone right into De Mill, we're, we're recommending we move that further north so we can get traffic in and out without anything from De Mill. Of course, everyone always says, put a traffic light there, that is easier said than done. It requires significant work and not anything that I think would necessarily bear fruit, so. But it's gotten better every day. We've got a number of administrators, the, uh, the city police have been actively involved, the Barton Mallow. Um, and our window of time, critical, uh, conject, um, congestion is seven to seven fifteen. So with a start time of seven twenty-five, if the lot can be basically cleared of traffic by seven fifteen, that's kind of our goal. First couple of days, we were seven twenty-one, seven twenty-two, seven twenty-three. Now we're down, it's only a six day school, we're down under that seven fifteen, seven fourteen zone, so. And, and the administration met with seniors yesterday.
And juniors.
And juniors today to talk about, draw on the diagram, where do we want you to enter the facility, where do we want you to exit, which lot, if you're going to park in this lot, come in this entrance. To just visually show the kids kind of where we want them to be, and we can do this even better at home. Very cool. Thank you. Thanks, Julie.
Okay, we will head into our report this evening. Our first one is the Policy Committee. Dr. Novak, would you please share us the Policy Committee?
Yes, we met on August twenty-fifth at one P M via Zoom, and it was myself, Craig Watson, and Tim Liff, Liff Crowe, committee members. Um, others attending included Matt Landry, Consequently, Michelle Bradford, Eric Hughes, Lee Brown, and Mary Moss. Um, the meeting was called to order again at one. We discussed policy seventy-five, seventy-five four zero point zero nine, artificial intelligence, commonly referred to as AI. Um, as schools increasingly integrate artificial intelligence in their curriculum, AI disaster policies and guidelines have become essential to ensure that we use tools appropriately and safely. Last year, the district developed an AI task force to help create guidance on the usage of AI for teaching new students. Based on that work, this new policy, this new AI policy, seventy-five forty point zero nine, artificial intelligence was developed and is being recommended for adoption and disordinating. This policy is crucial to setting clear expectations and providing a framework for professional development that prepares administrators and teachers to effectively and ethically use AI in the classrooms. Um, in light of this work, we are also making updates for two administrative guidelines, AG seventy-five four zero point zero three, computer usage, and AG fifty-five hundred, student code of conduct. These guidelines will also help to promote a consistent approach across the district. Ultimately, this proactive approach ensures that AI is used to enhance, not hinder, student success and wellbeing. We also discussed AG seventy-five forty point zero three, computer usage, artificial intelligence, and natural language processing, NLP tools for schoolwork language, was added to this guideline to provide further detail on the newly created policy seventy-five four zero point zero nine, artificial intelligence. And then, um, AG fifty-five hundred, the student code of conduct, there were few small language changes to this AG to address cyberbullying and cheating as it relates to artificial intelligence. And, um, Ken Consequently has added the, um, the policy seventy-five forty point zero nine, artificial intelligence, which includes a recommended small change in both AGs to the weekender we got and, um, for full board review. And the meeting adjourned at one sixteen, yeah.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Novak. Next, we have Finance and Operations Committee. Dr. Watson, would you please share us the meeting?
Sure, ma'am. Um, the Finance and Ops Committee met, uh, August twenty-fifth, two P M via Zoom. Myself, Summer Putnam, and Lisa Novak were there as committee members. No one absent. Others attending were Matt, Landry, Mark Rader, Michelle Bradford, Eric Ingalls, Brian Bader, Jenny Mudge, Julia Beruski from Barton Mallow, and Mary Moss. Uh, meeting was called to order at two P M, and we discussed bond change order number twenty-eight, bid pack number six, LHS additional locker room painting. Barton Mallow recommends the issuance of a change order to AM Mex, uh, painting company for an additional painting in the locker rooms at the Pure High School in the amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. This work will cover the painting of the existing ceramic tile on the walls in the locker rooms. This change will require the contractor to clean the walls, conduct extensive prep to ensure proper adhesion, and finally paint the two parted epoxy paint to the ceramic tile walls. The reason for this change is to create a cohesive design and standardize the appearance of the locker rooms for all end users. It was the consensus of the committee to recommend full board approval on change order number twenty-eight at tonight's meeting. Budget update, Eric Ingalls and Jenny Mudge updated the committee on the status of the budget. Eric explained that there is still no word or timeframe from the state on an approved state budget. This affects many areas of funding, including lunch funding for this school year. Jenny explained that last year we had eleven grants that totaled approximately seven million dollars. This year so far, we have one grant totaling seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, which helps support learning coach salaries. She also explained that all state grants for this year are still unknown. In addition, she stated that we were awarded a thirty-five million, a thirty-five M grant this year totaling three hundred and ninety-four thousand to support the new dyslexia law. And then our meeting adjourned at two thirty-four.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Dr. Watson. And then next, we have the Teaching, Learning, and Technology Committee. Mrs. LaBarre, would you please share us the meeting?
Yes, uh, the T L T committee meetings was on August twenty-sixth at six P M. President Ward, myself, Summer Putnam, and John Van Wagner, and Matt Landry, Michelle Bradford, Eric Ingalls, Jenny Mudge, and Mary Moss. The meeting was called to order at six, and I entered the meeting at six fourteen. The committee discussed the dyslexia law. The state recently passed Public Act one four six and one four seven, K twelve literacy and dyslexia laws. These laws require school districts to screen every K through two grade student for dyslexia in the twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. If a student displays characteristic of dyslexia, they must be provided support. In order to accommodate this, the district has been awarded three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars from a one-time grant, thirty-five M. In preparation, the district is contracting with I M S E, Institute for Multisensory Education, to provide support for K five students in both individual and small group instruction. Budget update, Eric Ingalls and Jenny Mudge updated the committee on the status of the budget. Eric explained that there still is no word or timeframe from the state on an approved state budget. This affects many areas of funding, including lunch funding for this school year. Jenny explained, just as Craig alluded to in his previous update, that we had eleven grants totaling seven million dollars last year. This year so far, we have one grant totaling seven hundred and fifty thousand, which helps support four learning coach salaries. She also explained that all state grants for this year are still unknown. In addition, she stated that we were awarded the thirty-five M grant this year totaling three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars to support the new dyslexia law, meeting adjourned at six thirty-four P M.
Okay, any questions or comments? Thank you, Mrs. LaBarre. Okay, that concludes our report section this evening. We will head into our action items. First, we have consent grouping approval minutes of August sixth, twenty twenty-five. Any consent grouping items anybody wishes to be heard? Okay, I will, I'm hearing none, so I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that the reading of the minutes be waived and consent agenda items, the approval is granted.
Support.
Okay, I have motion and support. Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Liffka?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Um, next, we have the first reading of Board Policy seventy-five forty point oh nine, artificial intelligence, AI.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, he should have been part of the consent. On the agenda, I misunderstood, so I apologize. Okay, so. Um, no, the change needs to be in its own, okay, so.
And if you, I thought first reading, we don't adapt it to second reading.
It's still approved as presented for first reading.
Okay, yeah, all right. I'll make a motion, can I make a motion?
Sure.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the first reading of Board Policy seventy-five forty point zero nine be approved, or artificial intelligence AI be approved as presented.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Liffka?
Go ahead.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, now we're to the change order, number twenty-eight, bid pack number six, at the Pure High School, additional locker room painting.
I'll make a motion that the board award AM Mex, uh, painting company an amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for additional locker room painting in LHS.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Liffka?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, next, we have closed session.
I'll make a motion to the board moving to closed session to discuss the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six absentee master agreement in accordance with open meeting. Support.
Okay, I have a motion and support. Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Liffka?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. We will head into closed session. It's seven fifty-three, we're back in open session. So we will finish our action items, but the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven absentee master agreement.
I'll make a motion that the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven absentee master agreement be approved as presented.
Support.
I have motion and support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Liffka?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, that concludes our action items. I'll open it up for any board member communications.
Uh, I'd just like to thank Barton Mallow for all the work they, hard work they did this summer. I think it's, that's my bonus for all the good stuff. Thank you.
I really think the tax payers were funding it. I know a lot of states said that this is really not fitting our students.
Yes.
And they are getting, that's the ones who are not fitting in all of us. Better locker rooms, a better bathroom, plenty of money out, just everything. Makes them more proud of their school. The lighting is just, the lighting is what has just really blown my mind. I mean, fantastic change. I think it's really going to help promote, I mean, you got high school kids going to school. I mean, they're not, most of them probably don't want to be there anyway, but I think with them being there, at least we can get them a great big bright, you know, nice space and hopefully that will encourage them to want to be there more because it certainly is inviting. It is just such a wonderful facelift and addition for our community. Another moment where we can, you know, again, like Lisa alluded to, thank the public for supporting that bond and making us have a building that we can all be proud of. Thank you so much for your, you and your team. I hope we can have an open house today to showcase all of this for the community and the buildings.
I'm good.
Anyone else?
Just welcome to the new staff. I think I went to the opening day. Um, and I think fifty percent, five years and, or less, stood out as relatively new faces to our district. So it's kind of amazing, but it's, it's a good thing at the same time to, that many, um, teachers and staff want to come and look at our community school and teach our students, so fantastic. And to welcome back all of our students and their families. We're looking forward to another great, fantastic year. Um, and then of course, all the comments, the board's made about the bond. I echo the same. And our tour was fantastic today, so I really appreciate that.
So I'll hand it over to you, Susan and Landry.
Thank you, Madam President. Not much else to add. Ditto to all those comments. Um, you know, half of the staff stands up on opening day and they're getting, they've been an employee for less than five years. It makes the employees that have been here for thirty years, like Mrs. Bradford, feel extremely experienced.
But no one stated that she started when she was sixteen.
That's right. Thank you, Dr. Novak, and excellent point, excellent point.
Come on, it's always a possibility.
Some exciting news to share. We're missing a face today. Uh, Mrs. Erica Ingalls, uh, safely delivered her twin baby girls on Saturday, August thirtieth. Kendra and Isabella, future Bolts. Um, and mom and babies are all doing great. So Erica is kind of widely regarded in this pregnancy as one tough cookie. She, we thought, twins, you know, everyone told her, you'll be on bedrest and you won't make it through this thing. And she worked, I think, on Friday. And had the babies on Saturday, and was sending Mark and I work emails on Sunday. And we'll be happy to know that.
True accountant spirit, come on. Right, right, Mark, come on.
Focus on.
True accountant. True, uh, no.
She is a beast, beast. Now, we did respond to the emails, it's hard to keep them coming, but, uh, she's doing great.
Fantastic.
Yeah, and, uh, oh, I wanted to point out, uh, the new addition to kind of our marketing campaign. Twice a year, we're going to send a newsletter, this is the first installment of that, to every resident of Oakdale Community School. So while they may not have a child here anymore, or their kids go to a different district, or they don't have any children associated with Oakdale, we want to let the taxpayers know and the community just some of the highlights of the district. Not everyone goes to the Facebook page, not everybody's online. Um, so right in their front door, twice a year, we're very, very proud of this. Special thanks to Matt and Kendra. He's the driving force behind this. Um, it's a great way for us to do things like support our major leader fund sponsors like, as we did in the board meeting with Jim Reel, bond and construction updates, but also programmatic updates and then highlighting some student success stories, um, like you see on the back page with Shannon Paul there. So, um, this is going to be a showcase for the district and another great way to reach out to our community and know all that we're doing. That concludes my comments, Madam President. You look out the panels, my time.
With that?
Welcome to the chair. Support.
Okay. Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Lutka?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBarre?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.